All over the committee, the whole special meeting for budget.
Roll call first.
Yeah, roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly? Chancet?
Here.
Sofa?
Here.
Wolf? Baron? Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Le?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And vocalsinger?
Here.
We have 11 out of 14.
Okay, I'm just trying to find the agenda here if we even need it.
We don't really. It's just one item on the agenda and to discuss the 2023 budget.
Yeah, so I guess the floor is yours.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, and we have the 2023 budget. We're just going to start out with going over the new website where our budget is displayed, and for those that are seeing it online, so they can see how to access different parts of the budget. This is on our website.
Recording in progress.
Under government transparency, under budgets, or under the finance department, you can access it either way. There is an online version and also a PDF version with a table of contents if you prefer to scroll through that way. For the online budget, we have several documents in the introductory section, Laura Newman's transmittal letter, strategic plan, and various other policies and items that support the budget. The budget overview is where we'll start out. This gives a breakdown of the budget by all funds. We have 148.5 million budgeted for 2023, with the electric utility being the largest budget, followed by the general fund, and unusually followed by SUER because they have the first, the start of construction for Phase 2A of the wastewater treatment plant. So, things to highlight in the budget for next year is capital spending. We have 50.6 million planned for spending for next year, with 15 million of it being the wastewater treatment plant, and we'll go over the capital items later. The budget for wages in the general fund particularly covers the bulk of the spending there. This chart here gives a breakdown of salaries and benefits, and then other operating costs. So you can see the general fund has 16.8 million in wages, and then 8.3 million in benefits, with only 6.8 million in other operating costs. And then we provide that information for the other utilities as well. The electric utility does not include purchase power costs because it would skew the charts quite a bit. So the general fund is the general operating fund of the city, and we have 33.7 million in spending, supported by 33 million in revenues, leaving a deficit of 728,000. However, we have 800,000 in capital, so we have an operating balanced budget without using reserves. The reason for that is an increase in sales tax and an increase in income taxes. The increase in sales tax could be related to higher costs of products due to inflation, but we noticed definitely an increase due to the online sales that we're collecting taxes on now. Property taxes, we have proposed to just capture some of the EAV increase, increasing our levy by 359,000, but it will decrease the rate still because of the growth that's projected in the EAV. There was a question that was asked about, and we're going to talk about the tax levy tomorrow night, but just to briefly explain, the more the EAV increases, your rate will decrease if you aren't increasing the amount you request for the levy. And so this budget includes a decrease in the rate of about two cents, which would return about $20 on a $300,000 home. And a question was asked just now by Alderman Serone on what the requirements are for a truce in taxation. And anytime you increase your levy by 5% or more, you have to publish, and you may have seen it in the newspaper for other taxing bodies, a big black box notice that says you're increasing your request by more than 5%. And there's some timelines that you have to do that on, excuse me. And right now, we're at 4.5%, so we are not required to publish the notice. But if we were to increase the levy by 5% or more, then we would need to publish that notice and hold a public hearing. And we do have time to do that if tomorrow night you should decide that you would like to. And then this chart here, I would just like to draw your attention to. It summarizes our main funds, the general fund and the utilities. The revenues and expenses and the budgeted surplus or deficit, they all show a deficit because of capital spending, and what the projected reserves will be at the end of the year, and the number of days operation. And what the number of days operation is, is it just takes our total operating expenses without any capital to see how many days you could continue to operate without any revenues coming in. It's just one of the measures of the health of the budget. And these are all in a good position. SUER has higher reserves because we know we have a lot of capital that we're going to have to be paying for, and higher debt payments. So then, some of the other tabs up here, this one has more charts and items on all of the funds combined. Kind of useful for getting a global picture of everything. It has a breakdown by fund, and a breakdown by object class, and then by particular departments. But the real meat of the budget is under funds and departments, and you'll see little arrows here, click on it first. And that means that there's more information under there, so you could go right to the department. For instance, if you wanted to see the engineering department budget, you could go right to it. And all of the departments provide the two prior year actual spending, the budgeted, the projected compared to budgeted, and then for 2022, and then the 2023 budget. If you see something in italics, that's a sub-line item under, for instance, here, part-time wages for engineering, they have an intern budgeted. That happens to be the only sub-line item in there. And then capital spending, we have a one-year plan, which tells you just what the spending is planned for 2023. It gives a nice summary, and you can see each of these. And if you want to look at one of those in particular, you can just click on it, and it will bring up the detail. If you want to see the spreadsheet breakdown of how it is, this one does not have a lot to it, but there is a spreadsheet for the breakdown of costs, and then a spreadsheet for the breakdown of how it will be funded. Some of these have shorter descriptions, some have longer. But you can use the back arrow, or just go to the top and go somewhere else if you choose. The multi-year plan is where you're going to see all of the capital spending that is currently planned out through 2027. The projects that are in 2024 through 2027 are subject to change. You aren't approving them with the passage of this budget. It's just for planning purposes, so we can plan cash flow, know if we need to look at rates because of future projects that we're going to have to pay for, or if we're going to need to issue debt. And this also has all of the projects that you can click on to view. And then we have a summary of our debt, the debt policy, and just the different types of debt that the general fund has, and that each of the utilities have, and the year that that debt will roll off. And so some of the things to highlight for this year's budget in the general fund, we have the GIS manager position that was approved last year, but they were unable to fill it. And so that was moved forward again to this year. And then a new person for finance, an accounting manager, financial analyst position that I've been holding off on, but I'm requesting now. And the police department has in-car cameras budgeted, and a full-time, what do you call that, social worker to be here five days a week? Right now, they just have one day a week, right?
Right, and that would be a contract employee, not a COB employee.
Right. It's actually a very good price for the services that they provide. It's budgeted at 70,000. And then another item that is in the general fund budget for capital are cameras in the downtown that's budgeted under the IT department. And let's see, it was street signs in the street department, or monument entrance signs, they're called, sorry. And I think that was really the only items that stood out in the general fund. And then the water department is doing the lead service line replacements. That will be a major project and will likely cause some disruptions throughout the whole city when they do that. But a very good and important project that we are receiving forgivable loan funds for. So all of the funds will be returned to the city. We'll advance them and then submit it to the state, and they will reimburse us. And then, as I already mentioned, the wastewater treatment plant is starting Phase 2A. Very large and costly project that started out at what we expected to be 65,000 many years ago.
65 million.
Our 65 million, yes. And now it's up to over 135 million, 140 million right now. So it is a very costly project, but necessary. And we've been planning for it and increasing rates. The budget does include rate increases for water and sewer, 3% recommended for water, and 8% for sewer. No increase planned for the electric utility again. We have not increased electric rates since 2015. So that's a very positive thing. So that's all I have to show you, because I assume this would be more of a dialogue with questions and answers. So if you'd like to start with questions?
Yeah, I'll start with one. The two cents, the rate will go down. What is, what was it, 10 cents then, last year?
Oh, no, the total city rate was 73 cents, 73.9.
Okay, I was looking at the
Oh, the percent that
Yeah, so, but it was 73, and it's going to go to 71?
Yes.
Okay.
You were looking at what percentage of $1? Yeah, and we're still in the 8% range because it doesn't change very much.
Gotcha.
We have, some of our neighbors are significantly higher with that rate.
Yeah.
Yes.
Don't have to look further than Aurora, where I believe it's currently $2.11.
Yes. That does include the library, though, but even if you adjust the library out, it's still quite high. If we added the library here is, I think, 50 cents. Our EAV actually is projected to be quite a bit higher, an increase that we haven't seen since 2008. Eight, yeah, that's what I believe it was, so.
What's, well, obviously, new construction is driving that.
Yes, new construction.
Probably the biggest piece to that.
That and the sale prices of homes also.
That's true. It went a little crazy there.
It did. So there may be some course correction there in the short. But on the other hand, we also have a lot more rooftops planned, so I think we'll still see net gains over the course of the next few years.
Yeah, just driving on Randall.
Yeah.
Today, I was like, oh, this wasn't here that long. Wasn't that long ago this wasn't here.
Right now, we've got about 500 living units planned that haven't been, they're being built or just being occupied, that haven't, I don't think, been thrown into the tax roll for calculation of any, anything now. So one of the things I think we're going to see is the ability to kind of keep that for a few more years, because we've got enough positive stuff going on. And certainly, if in fact Musart ever goes forward with their project, which has 100 acres of business zoning along Randall Road from Maine down to Musart Road, and then has 830 totally age-restricted living units, they're going to build like a senior community in there. That would have a significant impact on our tax roll because it would be on the taxes, but it wouldn't put a kid into the Batavia school system. Their part of the deal is, they don't want the children there in the senior living community. So it would be, you know, we've got some very interesting sidebar stuff going on here that a lot of other towns don't.
All right, other questions? If anyone here, I can't see. Nick, your hands are raised there.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. Question, Peggy, in regards to the question, and I just sent you, and sorry, I thought I sent, hit send this morning on that, but are you, the implication I got is by not giving back the two cents, that would bring the, it would bring it over the 5%, so we would have to file that?
Yes, yes, because we're at 4.59% right now. It's, how it's calculated is the levy last year compared to this year. And because of the increase in the EAV,
Oh, yeah.
It's providing, right.
Not 5% of the total, it's
Right.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
It's 5% on the dollar amount that we're levying.
Right, that's where I was confused. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Just for comparison's sake, the normal increase in EAV had been tracking at about 2% for a long, long
It was negative for several years to after 2009.
Yes. And Mark has a question. Mark?
Yeah, so based on that, and again, I'm sure everybody was shocked when they saw my question about just keeping the tax rate for citizens the same. What would that impact be to revenue if we were to add that additional two cents in?
The total amount, I'll have to give you that to you tomorrow. Because I don't have it off of the top of my head. I have a presentation for tomorrow, but I don't even think I included what the total would be. But I can easily get it and provide it to you when we present the ordinances tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, because I'd like to talk about that. I mean, it's, I look back, and the school district lost their bid to keep things the same. Unfortunately, they couldn't really tell people they were keeping things the same. It made it look like they were going to charge citizens a lot more, and we have the ability to keep things the same. And, you know, we've been talking about it for years, that we don't, like, long-term, we're not sustainable. And what that long-term is, I'm not sure. And we have an opportunity to maintain that to some degree, and I don't think that that would be frowned upon personally. As much as I'd like $20 back at the end of the year, and I know I've argued against adding in the past, but this isn't an addition. This is, no, it's an addition through not changing.
One of the things that's different for the city than the school district is they're limited in what they can levy, where the city is a home rule community, and we can increase our levy. Of course, we're subject to truth in taxation notice, where we have to publish that and hold a public hearing, but we can increase our levy more than the CPI in any given year.
No, no, I understand that. But that was my point, is the fact that, you know, things could have stayed the same with the school district, had they been able to explain it better. And for whatever reason, the way election laws work, they can explain it better. So anyway, I'd like to see what those numbers are, so that it makes a decision
Sure.
More meaningful.
I will bring that with me tomorrow.
Thank you.
Abby?
Yeah, that brings up something, the sustainability aspect of our funding, and then the idea of the excitement over new subdivisions being, you know, another revenue-generating thing in the future. But as Gary has mentioned before, subdivisions, long-term, are a net loser for us. So the more subdivisions like that we build, the more we have to tax in the future to cover the cost of the infrastructure that goes into, that they don't actually cover themselves. So it, and we need future growth to cover the past costs of those subdivisions we built today. So it is just kind of a
It is.
That development, that all development is good because it's paying past costs eventually is going to catch up with us, and we're going to run out of land. So I don't know, there's a bigger conversation there about how we're building and what we're building, and if all development is a good idea.
And I think what Gary means is that they don't pay for themselves through the property taxes that they generate, but having the additional rooftops brings additional other benefits, such as, you know, shopping local would be a generator of sales tax.
But if the subdivision perhaps in question is way out west of Randall Road, they're just as close to services everywhere. They have to get in their car anyway. There's no guarantee that they're covering their costs by the sales tax they're generating, because they're probably going to come to shop too. They're not necessarily guaranteed to stay here.
And to explain for those listening that may not understand what you were referring to is the cost to plow the streets, to respond for fire protection, and those types of things.
Adding the infrastructure that
Adding the infrastructure, right.
For years.
Lines of pipe, lines of wire, lines of everything. I mean, they're a lot of money forever and ever.
Anyone else online have any further questions?
Mark?
Mark, you're on.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to discuss the surveillance cameras again. And Mayor, I know that you've championed them for, you know, the recent spat in graffiti. I'm just wondering about, is it better to spend money on things that can help us mitigate the graffiti if it happens again, if we happen to have that, or is there something better that would just spend their $200,000 on it? It just hasn't been a problem in any of our time up until now. And then I also look at the fact that the streets is installing cameras, and I'm not exactly sure the locations of those cameras, but the idea that it's for pavement and other things is helpful. And obviously, it was mentioned in the answers to my questions about being able to share those across the department. So trying to understand that, those cameras, that camera situation, as well as the surveillance cameras really going to make a significant difference.
I'll defer to Chief Mazza on that. But in addition to the graffiti, we have had, for instance, the neighboring business and property owners on South Batavia Avenue who have made complaints about activities of patrons of the bar over there, and this is something that would assist with that. We also have experienced vandalism to public art, and it's something that could be used to address that as well. But Sean, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll say this. I was aware, did have a conversation with
I can barely hear him. Is there a microphone?
Yeah.
Hear you.
Oh, that's right, I can find the microphones.
Yeah, I was just saying that I did have a conversation with Bill Kellum about the cameras that they're going to be installing, thinking and hoping that maybe it'd be something that we could also use from the standpoint of being able to go back and look at the footage to see, you know, if there was an incident, who, and maybe when something occurred. Unfortunately, the system that they're using, it's not, it's really not for surveillance purposes. It's more for live time action to monitor the weather. So we did look at that as an option. As far as the surveillance cameras go, I know that this is something that many communities around us are using now. From a deterrent standpoint, that's really why, I think, the main purpose of the cameras would be, so that people know that they're there, stop some from committing crimes, obviously, when crimes do occur. And we have had surveillance cameras, in this case, in the back of the parking lot there of the 100 block of South Batavia Avenue. I think it would have been a great asset for us to have been able to go back and not only identify maybe who is doing this, but again, you know, what times these are occurring, crimes are occurring, allowing us to, you know, maybe better direct our patrols into those areas. We have had other incidents, and I'm going back probably seven or eight years, maybe even further, when we actually did have some surveillance cameras that we were using over on North River Street that actually did help us to solve some crimes. I think maybe that might have been what you were alluding to, Laura, as far as damage to some public art that was over in that area. So I just think that they'd be a great asset. These aren't cameras that we're planning on monitoring live and looking and watching and see what's going on. Really, it's there for the deterrent factor, and then to be able to go back when, and if there is an incident, to be able to try and make a determination as to who it is that we may be looking for, and again, when these crimes are occurring.
And just to point out, having these items in the budget does not automatically guarantee that they would be purchased. Because of the amount that these are over $20,000, the decision to actually purchase surveillance cameras would come back to city council before that purchase was made.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I guess question would be, how many cameras do you get for $200,000, and then where does it stop? Because you put cameras up, and then when people determine where they're at, then that's not where they commit crime. They commit crime when there aren't cameras. So, I mean, I would hope that we don't turn into something like London that has cameras all over the place, and it is being live monitored, et cetera, et cetera. But there's a one-time cost, and there's an ongoing cost to maintain these, especially cameras that are exposed to the elements.
Yep, and I can just think of a few places off the top of my head where I think that they'd be useful for the community. The public parking lot area that we're talking about over behind the 100 block of South Batavia Avenue, again, used them successfully in highly populated areas during the summer months, especially on the Woonerf area. Any area where we may be having a large public gathering, just to again, be able to go back. I don't know if Highland Park had surveillance security cameras, but just thinking of an incident like that, it's a parade route, to be able to go back and quickly gain access to surveillance, it may help quickly identify somebody and get them into custody before, you know, something else occurs. So again, highly populated areas, public areas, obviously. Perhaps the Wilson Street Bridge. I know we've had some issues over there with artwork, as well as just issues with patrons coming out of the drinking establishments and causing problems in that area. So off the top of my head, I could think of two or three areas where I think it'd be valuable to the city to consider putting cameras up, and those would be the three areas that I could think of.
Okay, thanks. I guess I'd rather not see it in the budget, or rather I have a discussion before we even put it in a budget, personally.
On that same note, is this a one-time cost, or what is the yearly, like, what would have to be a yearly budget for that, for security cameras?
Good, good question. Good, good question. I think there is a yearly fee that's involved. We did take a look at St. Charles, we used them kind of as the example, but really haven't dug, you know, too deep into, you know, what those costs would be. And again, I think it would depend on how many cameras, you know, we'd be looking at purchasing, so.
Yeah, the idea was only presented within the last month, and so we haven't really had time to do much research. And so we were just kind of trying to come up with a placeholder, but definitely ongoing maintenance agreement would be part of the deal.
Yeah, I was at a meeting earlier today over in Oakbrook with a number of mayors, and this is a topic that is being actively discussed by a number of cities. I mean, this is, and in talking, many of them have some of the same challenges our police department has. And one of them is people urinating on back doors and stuff like that. That's that's, many people find that very offensive. And so several, I'm not going to name names, but several other cities have a big thing going on with that. And so one of the things that they're telling me, or was told to the group today was, is that there's different companies out there, some will even bring their own cameras in and then you rent these cameras. And then if you want to add more or move them or if one of them goes bad on you or whatever have you, they immediately come in and replace it or do something. So I, you know, I suppose that's another way we could look at this. But I mean, this is a real growing trend and there is a lot of problems going on. And everybody said, well, once we put them up, we advertise it and nothing else. It stopped a lot of the shenanigans that people were trying to play in the alleys and whatever have you. So I remain a pretty strong supporter of this because having sat as the liquor commissioner recently and listened to some of the tales of woe that we were being shared, where the chief was in the room with me, with some of the neighbors on South Batavia Avenue, some of the annexes that were going on up there. I mean, it was, to me, it was kind of insulting that they were, people were doing stuff like that up there, but apparently it's going on. And so, you know, we, I think if we put these out there, the word will go out very quickly that, hey, they're back here now, they're watching what's going on. So it's probably not a good idea to continue this activity.
Other questions? Anybody else online?
No.
Nobody has their hand up?
Our next section.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it for today.
I think Mark's
Oh.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, sorry, the last minute thing. I meant to say it out loud and I forgot to. I did want to thank Peggy and all the staff that responded to my questions. I appreciated the thorough and thoughtful responses to those. So thank you.
Okay, Alderman, you heard, did you want to have further discussion on that this evening? Or?
Nick has his hand up.
Okay. It doesn't appear as though anybody else wants to have further discussion. If nobody else is going to talk about it, I'm the only one.
I think if it remains in the budget, if we leave that in the budget, we definitely have to have more in-depth discussion before we approve any kind of contract for installation and/or maintenance for those. But I think it's something that we probably have to do, you know, in some respects. And again, we're going to have, you know, expansion in the business district along the one that the mayor just talked about, cameras almost imperative that they have to be there. So that way, we can at least keep an eye on that. And then if three or four people get arrested for whatever's going on in that parking lot, that hopefully will slow that down or stop it, you know, by having surveillance there.
Sure. I would also ask just how many of those private businesses have cameras and are they willing to share that, those feeds with us as requested? And has that been an issue getting any of that information in the past?
You want to respond?
We have had some success in the past with businesses sharing surveillance with us. There are many of the bars and taverns in town do have surveillance that's limited to, you know, certain areas, even on the exterior of the property. So I'll say this, that those that do have the surveillance have have always willingly cooperated with sharing surveillance footage with us. So, but unfortunately, a lot of the other businesses, nearby businesses, not so much success, lot less common for some of the other retail to have cameras and footage. So, but I guess for the bars that do have them, they are, they do generously share the information with us. And it's usually very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Nick, you had hand up?
Uh, yeah, two things. One, just to belabor that that point, the fact, I think it would be worth seeing exactly where cameras existing are, that would save us in duplicating efforts, I guess, because I know there's always willingness to participate. I know cameras, while I'm a huge fan of Eye in the Sky, have those cameras that caused the Boston bomber at the marathon. In Highland Park, it was a private camera that was able to see that the shooter was dressed as a woman and helped capture that. So there's unfortunately, in today's world, a need to go in this direction, but I'll say that. But on the other hand, I want to say, Mark, you think, the staff, I wanted to thank you for all your in-depth questions, because that was, it was great going through those that answered everything that I was answering. So it, I think it helped all of us get through this quicker. So thanks for that.
Sure thing. Thank you.
I have a few more questions.
Go ahead.
All right. We have a little bit more information on the pavement condition cameras that were mentioned.
That was one of the questions.
I think Mark had asked that or I had been in
Yes. So the question and answers are under the overview online.
And I guess I'm just trying to get a little bit more details. Like, is that specifically like in one area of town, like just on Wilson Street? Or is that?
They'll be attached to the
To the security cameras.
To the trucks is was my understanding.
I can, I can hop in.
Oh, there, there's Gary. Thank you, Gary.
No, no problem. The cameras that I believe Alderman, Liam, Liam, Liam is, sorry, my tongue is tied, is asking about, those are actually fixed cameras. And for now, we're contemplating one in each quadrant of town plus an additional one downtown. So about five cameras total. And Chief Mazza mentioned that they're really not surveillance cameras. These cameras are not set up to be able to identify a suspect. These cameras are set up to be able to see, you know, how has snow covered the roads? You know, is the snow drifting and blowing? Is, are the roads shiny because you can see the ice forming on the roads? So these cameras are definitely not, you know, of a security nature. They're more of a broader, broader looking around what the weather conditions are in each quadrant of town. They're basically a way for our personnel to be able to log in from their living rooms at home and look at the roads to make a determination in combination with the information that we receive from the police department, because the police department has police officers on the street 24/7. And in combination with pavement sensors that we will have out to determine like temperatures and moisture, and also in combination with, you know, weather forecasts from the various services that we subscribe to. So all of these things are tools that go into managing winter operations with the goal being that we don't send out people before we need to send them out. And when we do send them out, we have more information to tell them exactly what they have to do to save resources. So primarily, winter operations is what is how those cameras will be used and that they are fixed and they'll be at strategic spots throughout town. Oh, sorry, I'll jump in one more thing. Peggy mentioned truck mounted. We do have truck mounted cameras as well. And actually, we have used those truck mounted cameras last winter as well as during leaf season this year for various purposes. They've already come in handy. We lost track of how many times those cameras have already come in handy to be able to document something in kind of one of those he says, she said situations, and it's right there on the camera. So I, if, hopefully that answers your questions.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, Batavia is not that large of a town, and so why that many cameras and that many quadrants would be needed to determine the conditions of the road? I would assume what is true on the east side of town would be the same on the west side of town, but I'm just trying to understand, like, obviously, you're the director of Public Works and have a much broader understanding of this.
Yeah, again, it's only one per quadrant of town. So it's, you're talking, you know, south of, say, Main Street, west of the river, you know, north of Main Street, west of the river, that having one camera cover that geographic area is, that's, that's not overkill. That's, that's, you know, pretty generic sampling of an entire quadrant of town for weather conditions and blowing snow and drifting snow. And the west side of town, west of Randall, has different conditions than the east side of town, you know, in the woods essentially, in woodland hills. So there are different conditions throughout town.
Thank you. Um, and then another question I had that I'm trying to even remember where I read this, but about potential budgeting for the food pantry relocation.
Right. We, the food pantry needs to be relocated because of the wastewater treatment plant construction. So they were already outgrowing their existing facility. And so there was a grant that was applied for to assist with that. And we didn't know for sure if we would be getting it. We still don't have 100% assurance assurances that we will get those monies. And if we don't, we will need to discuss alternatives.
So that's something that the city would assume the cost of that and not ask, I mean, let me back up.
Not necessarily.
I 100% support our food pantry in many different ways, and I love what they're doing. But I'm also would love for it to see them do incredible fundraising and, you know, maybe the city assists with it. But I'm still trying to get behind.
Right now, we already are contemplating that there is going to be a significant cost share between because in all likelihood, we aren't going to find an empty grocery store that they'll be moving into. And so a significant build-out expense will be necessary for them to convert that space from its prior use into becoming the food pantry and clothes closet, you know, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that is something that they're contemplating saving for the interior buildup.
So this budget line item is just kind of like an assumption of where it might be going since we don't know that grant we may or may not get from Lauren Underwood's office and not knowing where.
Right, we actually haven't budgeted anything for borrowing. We have budgeted some money in the administration department for leasing a space because it's unlikely that everything could be done that quickly.
Right. Even if we get the grants, they will need a temporary home in the intervening period of time.
Anymore?
Why would they need a temporary home?
Because the wastewater treatment plant construction begins late summer and the likelihood of us completing a permanent new location for the food pantry in that period of time is very unlikely.
Is that always part of the plan that they'd have to move when the wastewater treatment plant? I don't remember that potential move. I thought it was just the
We had talked about moving the food pantry for longer than we have talked about it being necessary because of the phase of the wastewater treatment plants. Trotter and Associates came to us last year to say that they're, they have determined a more efficient configuration of the plant. They had been actually looking for more space for a couple of years and had asked us, you know, to approach other adjacent landowners to see if we might be able to find space there. And we couldn't. So it was probably about 12 months ago that it was determined that the new, ah, it's where everything comes in, Gary, help me.
The Headworks building.
The Headworks building would best be located adjacent to the administration building.
So what does that do to the bike path there?
So the bike path, similar to where the bike path moved during Phase 1, it's contemplated that the bike path will take a similar path around the construction area. However, that will become its, I'll say that that is the new bike path. However, we have also applied for an ITEP grant to move the bike path to along the River Bank too. So should we receive the funding through ITEP to move the bike path to the River Bank, that would be its preferred path. But where we are moving it for the construction of this next phase of the wastewater treatment plants, we would contemplate leaving that as just an additional pedestrian and bicycle way to connect the various parts of our downtown. So it would be an improvement to walkability and bikability in our downtown anyway. And that is the Pamako Drive to Water Street route to First Street and around as it was in the prior phase.
If council recalls, we actually talked with council about this topic, maybe about a month ago now. We talked about how in the past, we had even looked at a bridge going over the river south of the treatment plant. And we also talked about the path going around on the bank, around the side of the treatment plant. And then we talked that evening, we talked about the path that's going to run along Pamako Drive up to Water Street as being the interim until ultimately we could do either the bridge or the other path around the treatment plant.
And I still think the one around the the bank is probably the best one because I think we could also stabilize the tour line at the same time, which I think makes more sense overall for what we like to do downtown.
And we have applied for ITEP funding for that. That application is officially in.
And with the new Headworks building going in there, would that, would the fix to the retaining wall happen at the same time then? Are we fixing the retaining wall to put
Yes.
Yeah, the Headworks building will eliminate the retaining wall. The foundation of the building will become the new retaining structure. So picture the side of the building holding up the slope there.
Any more questions?
Peggy, thank you for answering all my questions, by the way. But I have one question about the sidewalk program. So we have, we have money left over in the fund covering the safe routes to school. Is it safe routes to school money for the use of sidewalks? Or is it general sidewalks? Or are they going to only be around schools?
The safe routes to school projects are the sidewalks to the schools. I think there were, it was, Gary, what were the schools? Was it HC Storm and?
So we're up by Republic and then over by Cleveland. I don't remember the names of the schools myself.
And JB Nelson, yes.
JB Nelson, yes. That's another one.
So that project is budgeted at $350,000 and our share is a little over $100,000. And so the $100,000 that the city council has designated that they would like for new sidewalks, that money is being used for this project.
Okay. And then last year, was it the same? Because I saw that it was less than $100,000 last year as well.
Last year, they were, Andrea did answer that question today because I said, I bet she's going to ask why you only spent $15,000 this year. And they were, they were waiting to find out if they were awarded the grant because they thought they would start working on that. And time, it got too late in the season in order to spend the funds.
I guess I'm just wondering like how, and I don't know if Gary, you have the map memorized of all like missing links in the sidewalks and if they are all adjacent to schools and would all in the future qualify for safe routes to school. But that would be my fear is that there's other spots in town that were not is that there's other spots in town that we're not, we're not funding or spreading out that money to that should be funded.
No, it's it's an excellent question. And I will tell you that a vast majority of gaps are not direct routes to school. It's just that the gaps that are direct routes to school have a potential for this other funding source, a safe routes to school funding source, which is why we pursued those because we are we were able successfully able to get additional funding. But no, just generically speaking throughout town, there's a multitude of gaps that have nothing to do with schools. And those are the gaps that we're spending, you know, $100,000 a year towards filling in for council's direction.
But this year it's all wrapped up in schools or is?
Well, this year, yeah, this year's all wrapped up in schools because we're getting free money. So we decided to go for getting the free money and lose our 100,000 as kind of our contribution towards the free the $300,000 project.
And then I saw your note too, that we'll hopefully have an active transportation plan by the end of this year. Okay. And is there any, is there any buckets in the budget going through? I wasn't really sure, you know, in anticipation of potential projects that that plan identifies?
No, but we do, we could come back. And if there is the recommendations and there are some that you want to tackle in 2023, we could always do that through the budget amendment process.
And then I guess my final big picture question is kind of a follow up to Mark's question about the total number, you know, if we add that two cents back in, what does that actually get us? Is there appetite first from Mark to actually going back and saying, yeah, we'll leave it at that. And what projects do we then add to this? Or is that like generally across this room, not something better? Or is it even Mark? Is that something that you would consider? We'll start there.
I don't know that I want to add anything. I think I'm looking to say that we want to create that buffer. And we've talked about funding infrastructure projects. We we only like talk about the fact that we should talk about it. We never actually do. So this is a methodology to actually, you know, give us money to start that conversation.
I would really like to see us, you know, we've talked about this for years, that we're the lowest tax rate that we haven't raised, we haven't raised it much, you know, we're trying to keep that low. But I don't feel like we need to go backwards. And if that means that we're at a budget place where we're all comfortable with where it is today on paper here, and we leave that in where it would be, or if we could kept the rate the same, then we would, you know, stay under 5%. So where we we have to be without having to add extra steps to it. And then keep that money in that money then goes over the capital improvement. And we put that over there and then we work on the. The transportation, active transportation project and say, okay, we just put X number of dollars in there. Let's take 50% of that and put it towards the active transportation this year. Or let's bring back in fact, probably a good idea after the first of the year to bring back the sidewalk program again to us so that everybody can see that's on the council today can see where the gaps are, what, you know, what do we agree is the right way to attack that? And is $100,000 still enough money to spend on it? You know, or is it not enough money to spend on it? How long do we want to wait to get that plan to have less gaps in it? Do we want to wait 10 years, 20 years, 50 years to have that? And I think, you know, again, it would probably be good for us to see that. But I really feel like we have an opportunity here, you know, whether it's 20 or $25 or whatever the number actually ends up being, if we leave the rate as close to the same as we can, that money can then be used for those infrastructure projects that we keep talking about, but never get any headway on. And I think it is definitely important. I mean, talked to people again this weekend, you know, about the fact that we have five, 10,000 people a weekend down here on bikes. And, you know, how are we not gaining more of them as, you know, clientele in restaurants and in shops and everything else? How do we keep them here? And that's one of the things I think we need to look at is what are we really spending the money on? You know, do we want to have it all spent on cameras to watch what's going on at night in parking lots? Or do we want to have it spent on ways to keep the businesses active in the parking lots full and people moving through them all the time? That would somewhat stop those problems if you always have people there. So I think it's important that we do have that discussion and I'm sure Mark will like to be part of that. But I think it's something that we have that opportunity to do that and not be an extremely painful thing. If we wait and we let, let the rate fall back and we go back away from that, then in a year or two, we decide as a council, we want to do those things. And where do we get the money from? Well, we raise tax rate. Well, do we really want to be in that situation, having to come back and raise it and add 50 or $100 to somebody's tax bill? I don't know that I want to be sitting here saying that, yes, that's the right thing to do. I'd rather have done it five, 10, 20 cents, you know, $20 a year over a couple of years than the big numbers. It's much easier to do that. And I think it's easier if we do that and then plan for that or try to plan for it. I mean, nobody thought it was going to be 8% inflation this year, but it is.
Peggy, are there timing issues that arise when we decide that we're going to do a black box notice?
Yes, we cannot have the public hearing until at least seven days after the publication of the notice. We'll need some, the newspaper would need some time to set up that notice because it's in the middle of the newspaper, not in the legal section. So it we would probably have the public hearing on the 29th of November if we did that. And you, I don't think you were here yet, Alan, but we're at 4.49% right now for the increase. So even a small increase will take us over the amount that will require the black box notice. But we have enough time to do it. If that's what you choose to do, we can, we can do that. And just looking at. The numbers, it looks like it would be about 200,000 additional funding to keep the rate the same. Yeah.
And I, in a lot of ways, I think. We can justify that to the public in the infrastructure things that we're working on or would like to work on, be able to try to solve the flooding issues that we have and try to put money into, you know, connecting sidewalks, things that to me are much more open to the public and desired by the public. I think they they understand that. It's it's harder for them, I think, to understand if we say we're going to add, you know, three new people as staff members and we're going to eat up 200 grand doing it versus, you know, you're going to see less flooding in your neighborhood. You're going to see, you know, more sidewalks on your way to school, whatever. When it's tangible and it's out in front of people, I think it's much easier to justify that. And that's something that we had really no problem passing the the sales tax referendum. And we said we're going to use it to build two fire stations, you know, and to be able to do that and and come up with the fire stations that we had, I think was a really good thing. And I think five years from now, if we tell people we're going to use this money for infrastructure and we set it aside and we use it for that, it will be something that we can be proud of and that will, you know, people will understand why we did what we did with that.
One of the other things that I'm meant to mention to you is Main Street. We've started planning for the other half of Main Street out to Randall Road and Rahat has indicated to me that the cost is much higher than what they thought it would be. And they're contemplating maybe trying to break that up into two sections so that we could get as because STP funding has a cap of 2.5 million or maybe 2.7. But if we split that up, then we could get that twice, perhaps if there's funding available. But if not, then we'll have to issue debt for that.
Well, and we would have the engineering probably done for the whole section, both sections. And, you know, if there was any more transportation money available from whatever funding source or the STP funds, if we split it up, then we'd still get it done, but we'd have the engineering to ready to go if we needed it, you know, if we decided to borrow money to do that, correct?
Yes. And then the other thing that we may need to borrow money for is Carriage Crest, whatever decisions are made with that. But if if we have to go with the route of the 8 million or 7.9 million, we'll need to issue debt for that and we will need to have a payment source for that debt.
And to me, that would be if we started this year and left the rate the same and did that, you know, moving forward if we needed to, it would be easier than at the time we decided to do Carriage Crest complete and spend 7 million, say, on it to go out and issue debt for 7 million and then have to create that funding source in one year rather than already start that stream now. Any other comments on that? I think we should probably decide now if we want to leave the rate the same or if we want to go with what's written up in the budget at a lower number.
You can think about it overnight because I'll have the tax levy ordinances on the COW meeting tomorrow night. And that will still leave enough time to make that decision tomorrow evening.
So we can think about it?
Yes. And then I'll have the exact number.
Tomorrow, we have exactly what we would be at.
Yes.
Difference would be because I think that's going to be really important for us to be able to discuss that because I'm sure we're going to get questions about it.
Go ahead.
Yes. Peggy, what would the cost if we decided to go forward with that? What would the cost entail on doing newspaper filing and and the time required?
Oh, it's a very minimal cost.
Like 300 dollars?
Yeah, probably maybe closer to 800 because it's a large area of the newspaper.
Right. Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Right. Don't have any other questions, I think. We are done with that. Again, thank you. I know other people have said it, but it makes it so much easier. I told other people on the council, when I started on this, it was a much different process than it is today. I'm sure you feel like it's a much different process than it.
Definitely.
20 years ago.
Yes.
And we are not going through a budget line by line by line in a group of eight people and then turning around and trying to get the rest of the council to understand the question that the eight people had that didn't get written down, that didn't get shared with anybody that weren't explained, you know, in a video where you could go back and watch it. I mean, it's a lot different. And it's a lot easier to go through the budget and identify things that you think you have questions about or that you do have questions about. And it's much easier to find than anything you want.
One that reminds me though, one thing I wanted to show you, let's see who is a good department to look at. It does look rather funny the way that the prior year subline items are displayed. So I just want to explain this. This is the electric capital budget and we always show the two prior year actual spending and then the the current year budgeted spending, projected spending, and then the new year budget. But as you can see, there's a lot of zeros here. That's because these line items were not in the budget last year, or they were in the budget but not called out as a line item. And there's not a lot of flexibility with the software as it is now for us to modify prior year subline items. You can't change them at all. We tried deleting them and then putting them in this year, but then it still showed in the budget under the old year or under the original budget. So we're hoping that they'll still make some improvements for that. But if you see these zeros, that doesn't necessarily mean that there wasn't spending on these projects in a prior year. For electric, probably it is true, but there are some departments that have the same subline items from year to year. Whereas electric capital projects do change. That was probably a bad example to show. But it also, I wanted to explain why those zeros are there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to have another? We do have the public hearing on the budget tomorrow for a public comment. But after that, would you like to have schedule another meeting on the budget or?
Do we think we're going to need another one? You said the 29th will be the.
Public hearing.
The public hearing.
On the tax levy.
On the tax levy.
Right.
For the COW meeting, right?
For the the COW meeting, yes.
And then the first meeting in December would be the.
The date that we would call for passage on the budget.
Anybody else? Do we need another meeting? Anybody online? Mark, you want another reading?
Why does it always come back to me?
Because you're the one that for whatever reason, you're the one that digs the deepest into the budget.
Like I said, I was very happy with with what I saw. And I think that that two cents is going to make it. It seems like two cents want to make a big difference. And I know we've argued about this stuff in the past, but. Yeah, I don't think we need another meeting. I just want to see what those numbers are when we talk taxes.
Okay, we'll do that tomorrow night. Then you'll have those numbers for us.
All right.
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you.
And I can reserve my project status for tomorrow night, too.
Okay.
And then there's just others.
And then we have. Then we have others. Does anybody have any others for tonight? Okay. We have a motion for adjournment. Motion by Malay, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Go home and rest up for tomorrow night.
Thanks, everybody online.